You're ready.
Call to order, our Beechwood Board of Education meeting for July 14. Lori, would you like to do?
Yep, Mrs. Berger.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Hood.
Here.
Mrs. Slate.
Here.
Mrs. Woo.
Here.
Okay, we don't have any recognitions on guest. We'll move on to public comments.
Test, test.
They're on. Thanks for the video recording anyway. I think it's on.
Okay, they're on.
Yes.
Public comment.
Yeah, first.
This portion of our meeting, each person will be able to do, say about here. Can you not hear me at all?
Yeah, you might want to move it to the side so it's a little closer.
Jeanne yours might not be on.
Yeah.
Did you tap it?
Oh, wait, there it is. There it is. Okay. Now can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so for the public comment.
I can hear you now too.
Can you? Perfect. For public comment, we'll let everybody come up and Mr. Kaiser will read the names. And if you can just come up here, you have three minutes. And we appreciate you all coming out.
First up, Amanda Rosen.
I think the stairs over there, yeah. Are there not steps? They're all getting used to the new stage.
There's steps on both sides. That's just darker right now.
You have to go through those doors. It's not as, not as easy. That side's definitely.
Meeting location.
Can you guys hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Good evening. My name is Amanda Rosen. I'm a Beechwood parent of four with three kids currently in the district. I served on SBDM, founded our elementary chess club, and co-coached the middle grade academic team, which means I am deeply invested in the school. And I want to speak plainly because we're all tired of sanitized statements, vague legal language, and spin every time leadership fails to act with courage. In 2022, a Beechwood teacher admitted on record to Kentucky State Police to grooming a student. Dr. Mike Stacy, then superintendent, was present for part of that interview. He spoke with the teacher afterward, who denied everything, and said he'd open an investigation. And the teacher resigned. Stacy never reported any of this to the Education Professional Standards Board. He later said he didn't feel he had to because he didn't hear the full interview and police didn't follow up. We all know these facts by now, but we also know these are cop outs. KRS 161.120 was clear. No criminal charges are required to make a report. The superintendent's job is to report when there's suspicion of misconduct, not to determine if there is enough evidence. It is the EPSB's job to investigate. Not making a report is a violation of the law, ethics, and of community trust. Maybe worst of all, it left a teacher who admitted to grooming with his license intact. That failure has consequences beyond Beechwood and to the Commonwealth. Dr. Stacy has that blame on his shoulders, and he took those consequences. But there are two board members tonight who have not taken responsibility for their part in this. They were aware of the situation, and unless they tell us otherwise, and they've had every chance to do so, they stood by Dr. Stacy's decision not to report. Instead of modeling the Beechwood way, they doubled down, pushing through a vague defensive statement on social media, speaking on behalf of the entire board. That statement minimized what happened, downplayed the facts, and hid behind technicalities like the student was 18, which, by the way, the statute says student or minor, so not sure why you're using that as an excuse. There was no email to families, no clear acknowledgement, no accountability, and somehow we're supposed to accept that as leadership. I can say that Dr. Stacy did good things during his time here, but being a leader doesn't mean pretending someone's entire legacy is flawless. Leadership means doing the hard thing, even when it's uncomfortable. And loyalty without question is dangerous, and that's what I have seen from these two board members over and over again. So let me be very clear on what I hope to see happen next. Number one, admit what happened. Say it plainly. A teacher committed sexual misconduct. A student was harmed. The district failed to act. You messed up. You take responsibility, just like we teach our kids in the Beechwood way, unless that doesn't apply to you. Second, stop hiding behind vague legalistic language. The public isn't confused. The more vague you are, the more questions you raise. Create an actual position for a PR and communications director who can handle these types of situations. Number three, rebuild trust. That means actually holding working sessions. When was the last time you had one? I think it's been at least eight months. Working sessions are how the community can see you actually working, and it provides a greater level of transparency than these meetings do which are very formal. And finally, it means real consequences. I am publicly calling for the resignation of Jeanne Berger and Amy Slate. Their lack of ethical clarity, their failure to demand accountability, and their continued presence on this board sends the message that protecting the institution matters more than protecting the kids, and not just Beechwood kids, kids throughout the Commonwealth. If they cannot recognize the harm that's been done, or worse, if they recognize it and continue to excuse it, then they should not be sitting on a board that oversees the safety and well-being of students. And to the rest of the board, I say, this is your moment. You can course correct, or you can double down on failure. And to Superintendent Kaiser, I say thank you for the open house. That was a step in the right direction, and I'm very glad there are more plans, and I can tell that you really have your eye on rebuilding what's broken, and I urge you to keep that up, please, because the community needs it. Because this is our school too, and these are our children, and we are not going to let this go. We all want to move forward, but that only happens when the truth is spoken out loud and those who failed are held accountable. Thank you.
Corey Yelton.
Good evening. My name's Corey Yelton. I'm a mother of four kids, two graduates of Beechwood and two current students. There are many things that have upset fellow parents and Fort Mitchell community members in the last few weeks related to former teacher Jacob Sloan and former superintendent Mike Stacy. I'm only going to focus on two of those today. Number one, there should have been an investigation done in March of 2022, regardless of the technicality of the Kentucky State Police not providing Dr. Stacy with a follow-up report. This is indefensible. I find it hard to believe that once the police left the building, that was the end of it. What were the conversations with other administrators, the board, the board attorney that made everyone conclude that this was just a non-event and we didn't need to look into it further? Just because the teacher resigned, we just all move on? It is rumored that students were called into the office and told to stop spreading rumors about the situation, to stop discussing it. They didn't know what they were talking about. The silence of the administration and the board, along with the encouraged silence of students, is exactly what breeds sexual abuse. The communication posted to Facebook a week or two ago and the one emailed last week are clear evidence that you're still in CYA mode. What we want to hear about is how you're going to try and prevent this from happening again, the abuse, not the egregious response and follow-up. That leads me to my next point. We need to have ongoing education for our students, teachers, and coaches about the prevalence of sexual abuse in schools, about grooming. What are the warning signs? What are correct boundaries to have with your teachers and your coaches? Whatever the kids were told immediately after the story broke wasn't enough. Students, studies show that roughly nine to 11% of kids in the U.S. today are abused by a teacher or coach by the time they graduate from high school. That means that since this happened in 2020, there could have been about 61 kids at Beechwood High School that were affected. It is my plea to this board that instead of constant messaging that Dr. Stacy did nothing wrong, that you would turn your focus to future prevention and protocols so that hopefully no more Beechwood kids have to suffer such abuse. The community is watching, and we will not forget who stood on the right side of this issue and who didn't. Thank you.
Anne Chiquaneri.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Chiquaneri, and I have two children at Beechwood, 12th grader and eighth grader. We all want this to be over. We all want to turn the page. It is not the recent media attention that is ripping open old wounds and making it impossible for Beechwood families to move on from teacher sexual misconduct that happened in 2020 and the 2022 KPS investigation. You, the school board, are making it impossible with your irresponsible, obtuse, official statements. You do not have to be a lawyer or a school administrator to grasp the plain language that is in KRS 161.120 regarding the superintendent's duty to report to the EPSB. The superintendent of each local school district shall report in writing to the Educational Professional Standards Board the name of any certified school employee in the employee's district who resigns from or otherwise leaves a position under threat of contract termination or non-renewal for cause, or who otherwise may have engaged in any actions or conduct while employed in a school district that might reasonably be expected to warrant consideration for action against their certificate. Nothing in that statute remains, requires the school employee to have engaged in criminal conduct. We know that from the eight minutes of the KPS interview that was released in the media that the teacher in question acknowledged in March 2022 to, one, grooming students from his AP Music Theory course; two, sending shirtless app pictures to a student; and, three, texting about and receiving massages from two students; four, touching, being touched on the penis by one student; and five, touching the breasts of another student. From the LINK-NKY reporting, we know Dr. Stacy attended part of that interview before choosing to leave early, and Principal Kaiser was in attendance for the entire police interview. Doubtlessly, the Kentucky State Legislature has failed every child in our Commonwealth by not making it illegal to groom children or engage in sexual acts with students that are 18 years of age. The legislature's failure, though, did not relieve Dr. Stacy of his duty to report that. The agency empowered to ensure that a teacher, groomer, bare-chested texter, massager, sexual predator could never teach in Kentucky again. The law is not complicated. Dr. Stacy's duty was super straightforward. The school board's July 1st, 2025 statement does revise logic. I will skip rehashing all the things that happened and skip to what will get us past this. To turn the page, what could the school board do? What might allow us to look forward to the future and begin to heal from a sex abuse scandal that is five years old? I implore you, give us one definitive statement. Stop hiding behind vague legalistic language. Tell us in detail how allegations or evidence of a teacher's sexual abuse will be handled in the future. This is what we as parents need to feel secure that our kids are going to be okay here. Demand that your attorney support you in taking responsibility, admitting the mistakes, and doing the honorable thing by our children, teachers, and families, depending on your leadership. Don't allow anyone to hold you hostage over the mere possibility of a lawsuit. When you have high ground, as we have here, be willing to say, if he sues us, we will see him in court. We aren't afraid of a fight. And resign if you can't get comfortable with these two items. None of us should have to work this hard pleading with you to do something so fundamental. We've already been waiting three years. Now is the time for change. We welcome it. If only, please do the right thing. And this statement was written in collaboration with my friend Maria Sanders and Cal Steinberg, who live on 122 Seville and weren't able to be here today. Thank you.
Kristi Hyner.
Hi. My name is Kristi Hyner. I have two children who graduated in 23 and 25. Both were in the band, so I've been involved with the band, choir, and musical theater. So this hits very close to home. I originally sent this email and was encouraged to share it here. I would like it noted that I wanted to originally write this letter anonymously as I am concerned about retaliation. However, I was told that it wouldn't have the weight behind it that I would want, and this is too important for it to be discounted. I'm writing regarding my concern, dismay, and disgust about how the situation regarding a former teacher having a sexual relationship with a student was handled. I thought the communication was completely fumbled to begin with, but I was utterly disgusted with the details that have recently emerged. There are three people and/or groups that have culpability. First, Dr. Stacy not reporting the situation immediately is a clear violation of his duty per KRS 161.120. And I won't reread that. We've all heard it. I am willing to concede that Dr. Stacy had a reason to potentially belate the meeting as it appears the KSP showed up unannounced. But to leave the meeting early seems like a clear dereliction of duty. To say this is why he didn't report the teacher is simply inexcusable. However, we know that the principal at the time, Justin Kaiser, was present for the entire meeting, bringing me to the second member who was culpable. I understand that Principal Kaiser has zero legal necessity to report. That is the superintendent's duty as previously stated. But he was the one in the room when the teacher admitted to sexual acts with a student. So it was his duty to inform Dr. Stacy of what happened, and if he was unwilling to report, then Principal Kaiser had an ethical responsibility to report. Anyone is able to report to the EPSB, and it seems to me like anyone in the room during this meeting would clearly make sure the teacher's behavior was reported. I have been told that Justin Kaiser would surely report something of this nature, superintendent, but how can I trust that when he felt no pressure or duty to report as the administrator present during the meeting? The last people responsible are those board members who were present during this time. Part of a board's job is to hold that chair, who in this case is superintendent, accountable. Not only did that not happen, but we now know that Dr. Stacy's contract extension happened during the EPSB's investigation. What seemed strange and unnecessary at the time is now clear. Instead of apologies or any appearance of regret, it appears the administration has closed ranks, hiding behind legal technicalities. Generic emails have been sent out with clear legalese covering the board on technicalities, but where is the ethical fortitude? So what would be a good outcome? Personally, I think those involved in this cover-up should resign, but I know that that's not going to happen, so let's start with a few simple things. One, an actual apology. Two, recognize why the community feels so upset and betrayed. Three, put a plan in place to not just toe the line of legality, but to do the right thing. Four, adding structures to the school that support and encourage students to report sexual impropriety. Five, engage members of the community to help with points three and four. Katomi, one of the victims, has been incredibly brave to help try and shape law at the state level, and I would say this cover-up is one of the reasons women don't report. I guarantee there are plenty of people who would be happy to help, but there has to be a safe space to share stories and experience, and Beechwood is currently showing that it is not one of those spaces. This whole experience has been awful to relive. Trust was broken by the teacher, which was hard enough, but recognizing that the administration is just as untrustworthy has been worse. I entrusted my children to you, and you absolutely failed. I am begging for everyone involved to do better. Stop hiding behind legal technicalities and do the right thing. We had the Beechwood way preached to us constantly, so prove to the community that you meant it.
Molly Seifert.
Hello. My name is Molly Seifert. I am a teacher and the parent of a Beechwood graduate. I am here to speak on behalf of young women who have been sexually harassed, abused, or groomed in a school setting. I am one of these women. When I graduated from high school in 1995, the word grooming didn't exist yet. However, the practice did, as evidenced by the behavior of my history teacher. I approached the administration at the time, but I was brushed aside like many young women oftentimes are. Years later, at a family dinner, my younger cousin mentioned that the same thing happened to her. Same school, same teacher. That teacher went on to have a 40-year career in education, and this same scenario could have happened with the Beechwood music teacher who resigned in 2022. I have permission from Katomi Yokakura to speak her name in this public forum and to advocate on her behalf. She was my student. She sat in my classroom 409 like every other Beechwood ninth grader for the past 20 years. I directed her in the school musical and watched her perform in the concert band in Color Guard. She was brilliant, talented, and incredibly brave. If she hadn't delivered her powerful testimony in 2023 to the House Education Committee in favor of House Bill 288, the music teacher would still have his teaching certificate today. Katomi raised her concerns about the sexual misconduct of the former music teacher with Beechwood administration in 2021, and then with the Kentucky State Police in 2022. However, it was not until 2023 when Katomi delivered her public testimony that the Educational Professional Standards Board that the Educational Professional Standards Board caught wind of this situation and opened an investigation into the former music teacher, resulting in his revoked license in twenty twenty-four. That means that he kept his teaching license a full three years after the sexual misconduct became known to the Beechwood Administration. I entered this profession to teach kids how to read, write, and speak with clarity, conviction, and compassion, to help them achieve their goals and to keep them safe along the way. Many of Katomi's former teachers and I are devastated that we were not able to keep her safe, as well as the hundreds of other students just like her throughout Kentucky who have also been victims of educator sexual misconduct. On behalf of Katomi, here's how we can do better. Number one, admit past mistakes. Number two, apologize. Three, report allegations as required by law. Four, honor Katomi in advocacy against anti-grooming legislation that's currently making its way through the House and Senate. Five, provide resources for parents to learn more about grooming and sexual misconduct so they can help their children identify this behavior. And most importantly, number six, believe young women.
Andy Cullison.
Hello, Andy Cullison, class of ninety-seven, Beechwood parent of two students, also president of the Beechwood Band Booster Association. So I have a general concern that the board regularly has private discussions at quorum that are in violation of Kentucky's open meeting law. In my remarks, I want to provide my reasons for thinking this, but my concerns are not just general concern of breaking the law. I also suspect that a lot of the anger and outrage we're seeing on social media could have been avoided had open meeting law been followed. So I'll give one example, but I have a lot of them. The one example I have has to do with renewing Stacy's contract in May twenty twenty-four. My concern arose when I addressed the board last spring. The board made the decision to rescind a one-year extension and do a one-year appointment. I questioned the legality of this and still do to this day, by the way, but that's not my concern today. My concern today is that a remarkable amount of deliberation and discussion had to have happened prior to that meeting. It was clear that all members of the board knew what the plan was, how this whole rescission thing was supposed to work, and at times, members of the board even referenced conversations that clearly did not occur in that public meeting. For example, when asked why the urgency of this reappointment, one board member said, "Well, we all felt that we need to make sure he is here for the start of the construction project," and that "felt" was past tense. It was clearly referencing something that occurred in the past prior to the meeting. There is, of course, now speculation that perhaps Dr. Stacy's reappointment was fast-tracked not because of the construction project, but because the board knew or had very good reason to believe that it would come to light during any future reappointment conversations. It's not an off-the-wall hypothesis. I looked it up on the EPSB minutes. Stacy's case file is on the October twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four minutes stating that it was recommended for further investigation, but that just means they reported that they were continuing to investigate the matter. The Courier in Lexington reports the investigation started in July twenty twenty-four, just two months after the board made this decision to rescind the contract and renew. But starting an investigation is when the EPSB decides to investigate that they've been asked to consider investigating, so that's when it starts. So the time that Dr. Stacy's file would have been created for consideration for investigation would likely have been before the board would have, would have been making this decision. And it's not implausible to suppose that Stacy would have known prior to the meeting, the May twenty twenty-four meeting, that an investigation was likely on the horizon. Now, this is not a far-fetched conspiracy theory. This would give a reasonable person a good reason to want to know precisely what discussions were had by members of the board that led to the decision to rescind the old contract. And the easiest way to make this go away is do something I think you're already obligated to do, which is make any emails, group text discussions, or conversation notes about the board decision or discussion prior to the May twenty twenty-four meeting open to the public. So I don't want to dwell anymore on the past. I want to point to what I see as the most fruitful way forward. End the practice of discussing business outside of public meetings. And I'll close by noting a few things about public meeting law, all of which comes from this document published by the Attorney General, which is on the governor's website. It gives people an easy way to understand public meeting law. First, it's very hard not to be required to have a public meeting. Anytime there is a quorum, which is only three of you, and you discuss public business, which has been defined by the courts as the discussion of various alternatives to a given issue about which the agency has the option to take action, anytime that happens, it triggers the public meeting law requirement. And here's a few things to note. Mere discussion is required to be public, so it doesn't matter if you're voting or not. A discussion of public business by a quorum of agency's members triggers the requirements of the act, even if no action is taken, and again, that's here in this document. Retreats are also considered to be public meetings, also here in this document. In a case between the Kentucky Colonel and University of Kentucky, it was also ruled that inconvenience or embarrassment to public officials or others is not a reason for an exemption. There are, of course, exemptions to these public meeting requirements. There are fourteen of them, but institutional embarrassment is not one of them. The other thing, even if you decide there's an exemption, public meeting is required to legitimize a closed session, so you can't privately decide this is one of the exemptions. You have to have a public meeting where you announce that you're going to go into closed session, there needs to be a motion, you need to state both the general nature of the discussion to be had, and then you have to cite which of the fourteen exemptions you think justifies a closed session. It's very, very hard not to have a public meeting and to have a closed session that people don't know that it's happening. And then finally, you can't have a series of what are called below-quorum meetings, like coordinated around the same kind of discussion. So text threads where you're texting or checking in with individual board members, if one person's checking in with individual board members about the same issue, that's called a walking quorum, and it's also in violation of public meeting laws. And again, that's all here in this document published by the Attorney General, available on the governor's website. So I have two requests. For transparency's sake, please make public any emails, discussion notes, logs, or group texts, particularly as they relate to the May twenty twenty-four meeting, and start better aligning with open meeting laws. And the process is simple. One, don't participate in any walking quorum text threads that are designed to never have full quorum in hopes of sidestepping public meeting requirements. The law explicitly prohibits this. When three or more are gathered and public business comes up, someone needs to say or declare that this should be put on the agenda for the next meeting as a public discussion or as a closed session. And finally, if the matter is urgent, release a board statement that says, and I'm just going to give you this statement for free, "We are prohibited by law from releasing a statement or taking action on this without a public meeting, and we are required by law to give twenty-four hours' advance notice." So there will be a public meeting tomorrow at whatever the time is that's twenty-four hours later. We wish we could move quicker on this, but we want to respect laws designed to ensure transparent democratic processes. Thank you.
Lisa Maiman.
I'm Lisa Maiman. I have four children, three of whom have already graduated from Beechwood, one who's still in attendance, who will be a junior this coming year. I'd like to speak extemporaneously about this. I feel very emotional about how we take care of our children, and I know all of you care about our children. You wouldn't be here otherwise. That needs to be apparent to every person, every situation, when it comes to sexual abuse and grooming. These kids are trusting us to have their best interest at heart one hundred percent of the time, and you guys knew this happened. We should have been all made aware of what happened in a legal way, so that you weren't violating any laws, but so that parents could talk to their children. Many parents did not even know this occurred and didn't have the opportunity to speak to their children, to verify that their children had not been put in a position of abuse. It gave us an opportunity to give our parents the chance to bring this topic up and protect their children in a way that they weren't given. I would have liked to have had an official statement, please speak to your children about the possibility that they came in contact with someone that behaved any way inappropriate, at school, away from school, on field trips, et cetera. Many of these children that were in the band left to go on a trip right after this happened, literally days after this happened, and many of them were traumatized by what happened. They didn't know the details, they only heard rumors, and it feels like they were, many kids in the school were subjected to, "Don't spread rumors about this. How dare you spread rumors? We'll wait. You, you will turn on each other. Somebody will say, 'Who spread the rumor?'" Well, here's the reality of it. When you ask for silence from the children about sexual abuse, you're inviting the abuser to be the winner here. They are being put in a position to, "Be quiet, don't talk about it." Well, that's terrible. They should talk about it. They should say, "Are you okay? Do you need to talk to someone?" We should have provided counselors. We should have provided the parents the opportunity to speak to a professional so that they could know how to best speak to their children and protect their children. That's all we want, is to protect our children. That's the only reason that we're outraged. Katomi was not protected, and when someone came to the school and said, "There has been abuse," we should have been adamant that we protect those kids, every one of these kids, whether they were at Beechwood or whether they were anywhere else in the state of Kentucky, where we could have gone after an opportunity to make sure that people knew their child was taken care of. I think you all have Beechwood's best interest at heart. I firmly believe that. You wouldn't be doing this if you didn't, but we've got to do better at communicating. You know, quite a number of years ago, there was a school board meeting where there were parents outraged over some teachers being let go, and that situation brought five of us together. My friends Anne Thompson, Anne Chickwinare, Maria Sanders, Anissa Willis, and myself. Five of us came together, we joined the Pritchard Committee, we did a parent leadership fellowship, and our biggest goal was, how can we better communicate as a school district? And we're still asking that same question. I beseech you, find someone who is qualified to be a communications specialist for this district. You're all great people, I believe that. Find somebody who can help you communicate to parents, to students, the things that they need to know, desperately need to know, because this was an emergent situation, and it was so important that we take care of these kids and protect these kids. I learned tonight that Katomi and/or someone went to the school and made them aware in twenty twenty-one. That is heartbreaking to me that we did not take that moment to try and investigate at that point. We need experts on child protection from grooming, on child sexual abuse, and we need experts on communication to protect these kids. That's what I ask of you. I firmly believe you have their best interest at heart. You wouldn't be here if you didn't. So please, I beg of you, let's do better, because I know you want to protect these kids. I desperately want you to follow through with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for coming. We do appreciate all the feedback, and we will definitely have discussions moving forward on the best way to move forward as a district. So thank you. Onto our next item. The Discussion and Action Agenda. Take a motion to change the location of regular meetings.
I'll make a motion to change the location of the regular meetings.
I'll second that. I like the Learning Center.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Change, I'll take a motion to change the location of working meetings.
I'll second the motion.
And not discussion needed, Jeanie, but just for anybody present, we're literally wanting to move them down the hall to the Learning Center, right? That's all.
Yeah, future, yeah, future meetings are going to be at the Teacher Learning Center. It's just a smaller area, and you don't feel so far away. We like this area, but it just seems far, so. Okay. Ready? Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, onto our next item. Make a motion for revised BG one, Phase six B. Now, wait.
December meeting.
We've got to change the date of the December board meeting. Okay, sorry. Motion for, item C, motion for to change the date of the December board meeting.
I'll make the motion to change the December eighth board meeting to December first. Start and time and location time stay the same.
I'll second.
I can kind of get the reason why. It's good news. We got selected to present at a national conference called Learning Forward. We just found out a few weeks ago, so that occurs on that second week of December. Therefore, we put myself and some other staff members out of the building, so I just requested to the board if we could bump that up a week in order to be at that board meeting.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, onto item D now?
D.
Okay. Motion to approve the BG one, Phase six B.
I'll make a motion.
Do you want to add anything to that?
We just had, in our budget, we had some restricted funds that could only be used for construction, and so what we did was we took those restricted funds that could only be used for construction and pulled them into this phase of the BG, which is the building and its grounds, and we're going to use those funds, put them in there to pay for some of the construction costs of this current phase, and then we're going to pull down the rest to either increase some contingency or decrease the bonding on the next phase. So that's just step one, was this month, to pull those funds into this one, to start to pay down some of those costs of the construction.
No, I'm looking at the BG one right now, and just on the front page, I didn't notice the difference. Where is this reflected in here, the change?
The pulldown?
Yes.
That, the four sixty-six?
The highlighted. It's reflected over on, Jimmy.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's really where funds available.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you, I see it now.
It kind of highlighted, but it didn't come across everywhere.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, mission carries. Onto item E, updated policies and procedures for twenty-five and twenty-six. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Some of the policies here, there's a lot of policies that we received from the state this year, a long list, more, longer than normal. Some of the, I know the one that everyone is aware of is probably Senate Bill one eighty-one, that policy that requires traceable communications platforms for us to approve and require everyone to only use those. to only use those. The next item on the agenda is about approving those ones that we've selected for this upcoming year. Other than that, there's some other kind of typical policies that were presented this year that we made those updates. There will be one around courses. We're required to teach financial literacy now, that will be added into as an elective. So, we have 23 credits, six of them, I think, have to be electives. We're making one of those electives requirements to be the financial literacy. So, that's going to occur this year as part of policy. And so, other than that, the big one this year, the maternity leave, some of the language in that one, we bumped that to next year to make a decision, to see how other districts that are engaging in that this year, to see how they're going to navigate some of the languages that was left out of that policy, left us a little apprehensive. And there aren't many districts that are jumping on that currently, they're going to wait to see if there's any clarifying language in that policy. So, that will be something we'll decide on next year when that policy maybe gets revised. They're going back into a session this year to revise some of these policies, including they're looking at that traceable communications application policy. So, we're just letting some of those develop, go down the road a little bit longer to see if they're going to be reworked in any way, shape, or form. Other than that, there isn't anything necessarily crazy from policy, than any policy change.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, on to item F, traceable communication platforms. Take a motion.
I'll second.
Just the traceable, yeah, the traceable apps that we've reviewed and selected for this upcoming year. Obviously, ones already exist, that being the Infinite Campus, the Microsoft Suite that we use with email, we have the Google Suite with Google Classroom, we have Class Dojo Elementary, not necessarily used for direct student to staff, but it has that capability, so we put it in there. Tabroom, Tabroom is a platform that Forensics uses, so when we ever have a tournament here, and we have staff members that are judges, they do directly communicate through the platform on their performance, so we added that to be safe. The two that we added for, like, the extracurricular communications, the coach, the band director, all those things, is Remind, which is soon to be Parent Square. So, when you see communications come out from the school around Remind, it's going to soon be called Parent Square. And the other one is SportsU. We're giving every kind of program the option of SportsU or Remind, whatever works better for you. We wanted to give two options, work through. Our goal down the road is hopefully to maybe have one application, so whatever, regardless of your child's involvement, we can maybe have one platform to provide the needs for all. So, those are the two this year. And then, the final one you see on the list is the NKU Thomas More. We have teachers here that teach Thomas More classes, or they teach NKU classes, and they have the opportunity of running those classes through a platform called Canvas. Now, they don't use that, but if they did, this would allow them to communicate through that platform. So, that's Canvas there. And those are the ones that will be approved for this year.
Anybody have any questions? Any, Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood? Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries on to item G, the Assistant Superintendent, need a motion to create?
I'll make a motion to create an Assistant Superintendent position.
I'll second.
Want to add anything to that?
Just to have a role that would allow for a lot of different responsibilities to occur in one position, from instructional leadership to human resources to professional development evaluation, federal and state program oversight, policy planning, communication and public relations, one role to be able to house all that.
And also, did you mention that you will be taking away a position as far as your, like, old position?
Yeah, for my position, Director of Operations, we will not be filling that particular role as it stands now. Part of the restructuring will be the next position.
Okay. Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries on to item H, Director of Athletics and Pupil Personnel. Make a motion. I'll second.
This is the, this is kind of the role of Director of Operations restructured, with the increase over the past 10 years of athletic programming and the need for some oversight that runs kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, along with some of the roles that existed in the Director of Operations role, from DPP, which is Attendance, truancy, court and law services through student attendance, and you have maintenance, transportation. Some of those roles that are a little bit larger can be kind of consolidated into this particular role. So, it's just kind of a restructuring of my role.
So, none of these responsibilities are anything new, it's just being essentially shifted around to different people?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Different, yeah.
Different positions, yes.
Yes. Are you ready? To vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I tried to get back.
It's okay. Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries on to item I, Post-Secondary Scholarship Program Development.
So, with the recent, this, oh, sorry. Yeah, I got you. I'm learning, it's my first one.
I'll make a motion to create a post-secondary scholarship program development position.
Okay, now you're up.
Got it, okay. Based on kind of last, last spring's discussions around trying to identify a way to support students regardless of their talent on to post-secondary, to align with parents, students, and those post-secondary institutions, to provide a good avenue for these families or our families to discover maybe opportunity where the talents align to some scholarship money, based on how much college costs nowadays. And so, in order to get a program in place, up and running, which is one of the things that I know Alan and Jana have as one of their top priorities in the next three-year strategic plan, is to have someone facilitate the upstart of that. So, it's a temporary or a reduced role, but it's, that role is to work in the development of this plan, which would be like a one-year plan and a three-year plan. Once that plan was developed, then that person passes it on to the team in the high school to implement. And so, this person would kind of oversee that development, that research, that site visit, all the work that goes into creating a really good plan that can be implemented effectively.
Anybody else have any questions, or? I'm excited for it.
It has the potential to be unique, effective, to meet a current real need. The cost of college has dramatically shifted in the past 10 years, continues to go up. What have we done, what can we do as a counseling team, as a high school team, to adjust what we do to support families? From an education standpoint within the building to students, and educating our families on opportunities to match them up with the appropriate institution where they could maximize, like, their money, and maybe not have to go in as much debt through that process.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries on to the Consent Agenda. Take a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as written. It is quite an agenda.
It is.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I will second.
Some of the things, the Consent Agenda is pretty long, I'll go quick. I'm just picking out some things that I think are of importance from this agenda, that aren't so just run-of-the-mill. On the use of facilities, there's the Northern Kentucky, or NKCES, they run all the professional learning for all of our districts, they're called the Co-op. They approached us to use our facility for one of their professional learning, like regional professional learning conferences. So, this is kind of going to be a regional thing where a lot of different schools and teachers can come and learn on campus here. So, that's one, it's called Sprout Ed, and that'll occur in the fall. The other one that will occur in the fall will be something called EdCamp. If you're a teacher, you're probably familiar with EdCamp, but they've approached us to be able to use Beechwood's facilities to house that experience for teachers, which is, I've been to that a few times, it's really great. So, that's one of, two of the use of facility items. There's the school calendars on that, there's an adjustment to the school calendar, we did it last year, the adjustment is that Friday of prom, we're bumping the high school early release to coincide with the Friday of prom, just so kids get out early that day, instead of that Wednesday, it's the Friday, teachers stay around, stick around and do their professional development. We have two contracts on there, SRO and the DCCH, which is our Guardian Angel School that works onsite over at DCCH. Those two, just recognize that, how great those two institutions are to collaborate with. The city was really welcoming in regards to helping us out, a two-year deal with the SRO there, and then the DCCH contract with the teachers we provide and how they help us and facilitate us to be able to use that space to educate their kids. So, those are two contracts that were on the Consent Agenda. Salary stipend schedule, you see that on the agenda, that just reflects some of the adjustments made from the new job descriptions, the job postings that are coming up from those three. You'll see a change order on the Consent Agenda, that is about down here where the dressing rooms are for the stage and all that, the hallway down here, band storage. The inspector walked through and required us to put more fireproofing, so that change order is about getting more fireproofing down in that hallway. You have the CEP is on there, that's a Certified Evaluation Plan. Recent legislation required us to take a three-year evaluation cycle and expand it to five years. So, now, instead of every three years, someone gets a summative, now it's every five. So, just extended that window. Through that CEP committee, which is a 50/50 committee of teachers and administration, we went through the process of looking at our CEP, revising it, making sure it was legal and allowable, but also not just looking at a five-year gap now between summatives, to implement more effective ways to formatively evaluate, instead of looking just at the end. Those years, that gap doesn't just mean we're not going to do observations, we're still going to continue those observations, it just won't be the summit of every three, it'll be the summit of every five. Handbooks, you'll see quite a few handbooks, we have a lot here, with all the different organizations and schools. In those handbooks, the biggest change to most of them was updating, like, names and phone numbers, but we added the Traceable Communications App, kind of that statement in each one of those. You'll also notice a letter will go out tomorrow around, kind of tonight's decision around the apps, we'll send that out to families, that's non-sequitur, we'll send that out to families, staff on traceable communications. But that's included in all those handbooks. I talked about the Financial Literacy Course getting added to the high school required graduation requirement, there's another one. We've added a class called Foundations of Science. It's a chemistry-physics hybrid that could potentially count for a high school science credit. Again, we have a variety of science credits that students can choose from to fit that requirement of the courses they have to take, it's just another option for students to take in high school for science. And I think that's it for items on consent.
I think we need more examples.
Just a few.
We don't have enough. Any discussion? Any other questions on the items?
May I, may I say something or make a statement? So, the, in addition to the traceable communication and a couple of other things that were passed in session this year was House Bill 208, which requires school boards to adopt a policy addressing cell phone usage in school. Our current policy does meet those requirements, however, it's not enforced. And I can tell you, because my students break it all the time, so I would urge the school to enforce that policy. And I did notice that our handbook actually became a little looser on the disciplinary action with the cell phone usage, which isn't, it's not a hill I'm going to die on, but I would just encourage and really beg the high school to really, to really stick to that, take the cell phones away, the kids don't need them, that's all. Everyone knows how I feel about cell phones, probably, so I don't need to say anymore, but.
Yes, and we've had, we've had those direct discussions with the high school to make sure that whatever's written is enforced strictly.
Great.
All right, Mrs., are you ready? Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries on to information portion of the meeting, Superintendent's Report?
Yes. First, I want to start with, this is my first meeting, so very happy to be here, very humbled by the whole experience of the past, from the application process to the interviews, all of it. The support from internal, external, has been really humbling and a lot of gratitude to share there. With that, just a brief statement about myself and kind of the angle I brought into this role. When I applied for this role, I spoke on the priority of communication and transparency, that was one of the foundations, I think I have a statement on my website that says, "Communication is the bedrock." I feel this is a strength of mine and an area of growth for myself and our district, as many areas of growth. I aim to improve the perception and the reality of information flow. I want to be clear that sustainable change, or sustainable changes, happen one step at a time, and as a brand-new superintendent, I urge you to share my patience as we begin to those first steps in creating a well-informed community. Steps such as superintendent advisory from last Monday and the next one coming in October, another step would be to share and invite anyone who'd like to see us work and share in our decision-making at the next working meeting on July 28th. This is an open meeting with the opportunity to watch us work together and have discussions. I've been on the job for 13 days now, and the 30 days leading up to July 1st brought with it some significant challenges. There was complexity to that situation and ultimately caused restrictions in our communication and our transparency. With that said, I want to be clear about me, me and the way I operate. Regarding the past reporting situation as the principal, I was unaware this was not reported. So, I do acknowledge fully that reporting situations, such as those, are vital to the health and safety of not just Beechwood kiddos, but for all. I can assure you that reporting will occur going forward, as I am speaking for myself in my new role at Beechwood, and any issues that come up that involve such occurrences, it is also our duty to communicate to our families throughout the process. This may not include details or names, but communication just to make sure our families know what is going on. Communication and transparency are only words until they... Test, test, it's probably up there in the... Brandon, you on? Yeah, they're all off. I can go, I can speak loudly, over the AC. All right.
That's terrible timing.
I think they're all out.
Are they?
Yeah.
Brandon, you resetting it? He said one minute.
Thumbs up. Just one thumbs up.
It's a test of my communication right here, okay. Communication and transparency are only words until they are in action. We will move from telling you what we are doing to why we are doing it. Finally, in order to complete the circle of communication, we must provide opportunities to listen. Along with superintendent advisory, I invite anyone and everyone to please come meet with me or call me. Under my guidance, this district will always have open doors and open lines. Thank you for listening. Second on that, all right, thank you. Hopefully, that's not my last applause. Just some things to recognize in Superintendent's Report of, I know things slow down in the summer, but still, there's a lot of great things going on. We had a summit here, it was our second summit at school here in June, on June 9th, and we had 200 and something people show up. This was a regional event that we held, it was around, last year it was around solely around AI, this year was around AI and instructional practice in the classroom that kind of meets the needs of today's current students. So, it was kind of a hybrid of two things. And from the planning of the district team that planned to the amount, sheer amount of participation that the students had in it, not the students, the teachers had in, like, providing professional learning for other, we were a showcase, not just our building, but the teachers were. So, this summit was very well-received, we've got invited to be part of CINCIAI Catalyst as a result of it, which is a kind of a think tank for artificial intelligence and how we can play a role in one of the pillars being education. So, that was great, just a great event, I wanted to recognize. So that was great, just a great event, I wanted to recognize. Number two is the Aurora Institute did a long case study for us over the past several months, and they just released a national publication in which they highlighted only three districts in the entire state. Now, if you read through this publication, you can see that we're head and shoulders above the other two. So if you have seen that on social media or wherever, I'm encouraged, just please read it, it's long, it's a good case study, but it shows a lot of the real work that teachers are doing in this, in this building. I'd like to recognize the AP data that has just been released. We jumped 7% in our pass rate. If you look at the global means in comparison to some of our other courses, we're at or above in most, and so that's a really great accomplishment, Alan and Jana, for holding high expectations for teachers and students in regards to the AP scores. Very excited about that. Superintendent Advisory, we had about 30 to 35 people show up over in the TLC, Teacher Learning Center, last Monday. It was a great opportunity for them just to learn a little bit about me, but also give feedback. And so they provided feedback that we'll use towards developing our next three-year strategic plan. We also had a staff survey that went out to give us feedback on the three-year strategic plan. We're using those two in regards to, and also district guidance and board guidance on what needs to be in there to grow us as a district going forward. Which lead me to the next item I wanted to speak about was Cabinet and Admin Retreats. This week, we're going to do a Cabinet Retreat. The sole, not sole purpose, but the primary purpose of the Cabinet Retreat is to use that feedback to drive our next three-year strategic plan. So that'll occur this week. Then the following week, we'll get with each building to see, okay, how, what part do they play in refinement of the three-year strategic plan and how that applies to each one of their buildings to start to implement, whether it be teams or tasks that need to happen in order to meet the needs of that strategic plan. Some of the learning I talked about with professional learning with the summit, some of our teachers this year, from AP trainings to Arts PD to ASCD, we had a national conference where we had Ms. Bromley and Ms. Whitmer attend with some of our teachers, some of our teachers who are doing letters training over the summer. One of our counselors went to a national counseling conference, so a lot of professional learning occurring. I'm actually doing some as we, as we speak, not only as new superintendent, there's something called Cohort 14, it's by law, I have to train for a year with other superintendents who are new, that's down in Frankfurt, so I'm there many times to do those trainings with a group called KASA. I'm also started my first class at my doctorate at NKU. Other than that, one thing I do want to kind of get us talking about, which we'll talk more about at the working meeting on July 28th, is this week, this past week, we had a storm. After the storm was over, a giant limb fell out of one of the trees on the front lawn, like, big. And so we removed it, obviously, we had some work done in that tree to clean it up and figure out if there's any other potential dangers there, but we've asked a company to come in and give us a real evaluation and assessment of not just that tree, but all the trees, to see what we need to do going forward. So just know, if you drove by and saw that tree, it's probably ideas, like, I'm glad that didn't happen at 3 o'clock on a dismissal. So just know that we are in full investigation mode on that, just to make sure that we're going to do something about resolving that issue. Other than that, I'll go to finance.
I mean, this is the unaudited report, you know, we're still booking entries because it's year-end, but there's nothing unexpected in this report. We did see some spikes in a couple areas. One of them was utilities, which we, it's to do to rate and the usage, because we've got the newer building open, but we anticipated that, so it wasn't outrageous, we had a budget for it. Supplies, again, that was another area we knew we might see a spike because of the new building opening, so we kind of had that planned for. The other thing in there, I mean, Justin and I had talked about it, and I'm sorry, I'm explaining everything I should, but those are really like the big things, I think, like, there's a couple other things, but not unexpected, everything's very what we expected.
Yeah, expected, and you'll see increases in four areas, increase in salary, salary increases from some payouts. We had to take all of our, the ESER money, prior to it running out, we had to restructure and put those ESER, people were being paid, some of their, some of their, we had to reclassify them, and that was taken on by general fund. And the salary increase, we did do a salary increase from last year, and that, you see that impact in the final number in salary. Supply-wise, Christie talked about utilities and how just, not just the new building, but utilities in general have gone up. And so that cost, you'll see, we have our ELA and math curriculum with created, which created a cost increase. Chromebooks, and then we had some Munis and HR upgrades, and those required some cost. Property service was the third one, and that's just our insurance premiums went up, insurance premiums in general have gone up, that provided an impact for us. And then debt transfer, if you see that one, that's just our free reduced lunch costs, we cover free and reduced lunch for the kiddos who qualify. The other one is title funding, and this isn't required, necessarily required or related to finance, but if you've heard in legislation about title monies that are being kind of held, they're not being, they're not done, they're just kind of being held, and we don't know if they're going to release them or not. And so that's Title 1, 2, 3, 4. Title 1, for us, was not touched. Everybody still has access to Title 1. Title 2, that's our PD money that we can use for conferences or allowing teachers to do PD, that is being held right now. Title 3, that's a small portion of money that we get from the state to help with our EL programming, so that's being held right now. And then Title 3, which is for some enrichment, like equipment or STEM, it's a small amount as well, doesn't really have major impact on us, but they are holding those. We're so small as a district, some of those funds that we get aren't very large, but these larger districts that use these funds a lot, they're being impacted, so our size kind of helps us with that, but they're still being restricted and held, so there is an impact on our, on our budget.
On our next year budget.
Yeah. That's, that's all I have for Superintendent Report.
About the status of the new building and the construction, I know June 25th was supposed to be the punch date walkthrough, were you a part of that?
Yes, I was, I was here in the.
Okay. At our last two meetings, Dr. Stacy had told us the two real issues we were dealing with were the front steps and the big TV wall in the student center. Did those get resolved by the time it got handed or over?
The, the front steps, we met today. Today was my first construction meeting as the superintendent, and so we met today at 11 and discussed those front steps, and they will be completely torn out Monday, completely, because they do not.
The two step repair didn't work?
No.
Okay.
They're going to be completely torn out Monday.
So the.
And rebuilt.
Complete tear-out that Dr. Stacy expected is happening, it's just a little later than originally thought.
It's happening.
Still going to be a four-day process and no disruption till start of school?
I don't know, the, my request from them, this better not mess with one day of students or even that week. This should be done complete before kids are on campus. That was my request, and they guaranteed me it, but guarantee from construction is just that.
I've never poured concrete in my life, I just knew Dr. Stacy said it'd be a four-day process, so I was hoping that was correct.
I don't know about the, I don't know how many days, but they did assure me that it would be done by school or students being here.
And what about the TV wall?
TV wall, there is a, we're with American Sound, TV wall has one TV on it that is somehow damaged. We don't know how it was damaged, we think it was through install. That's still something that we're working through with American Sound, but it's got to be ready before kids get here. It's just, it's been a lingering item, it's not been completed.
Okay.
And it's, it worked for a brief amount of time, and then something happened when it went, Tim Lillard could probably speak to it of why. I'm not the most technical person, but I think it worked for a brief amount of time, then it somehow went out. It's, there's a lot of issues with that TV wall that need to be resolved.
So aside from those two big things, where do we stand as far as the punch list from the last round of construction?
From the last round, a lot has been accomplished. They've done a good job of a lot of the punch list items. In here too. But, I mean, those aren't punch list items, those are access points for wireless, or for Wi-Fi in here, that's on us, we're putting, we're installing those, that's not punch list construction. But there's been, a lot of the items have been addressed. The next, the date they set today in the construction meeting was July 31st, completely done.
Completely done, all right.
That was the hopes of Codell, said July 31st is our deadline. I think the big, one of the biggest things we talked about today was the front steps, the TVs, and then the HVAC, making sure that the HVAC is, because there's going to be kinks. They put it, they install it, we see, okay, why is this one not coming on right now? So there's going to be, I think there'll be some lingering things that aren't on punch list that we'll have to resolve that you can't walk around and see something inside the.
It'll happen on the first day of school.
Oh, yeah. First day of school will be about 97 degrees and half the building will be out with the HVAC, just, just be prepared.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll take a motion to make the agenda part of the official board minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hood? Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
I'd say thank you for the opportunity to be superintendent here, very appreciative.
I'm sorry, what?
I just said thank you for the opportunity.
We need to figure out how to get this microphone to go right into its. Okay, well, take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we do, we doing comments?
Well, public comment, yeah. Or, no, I'm sorry.
I just, I just.
No, just board.
On the board business, I just, I just want to thank everybody for coming today, showing us your thoughts, your fears and expectations, and I, I want to let you know that this new administration and this board is going to be full force with you, so.
Agree.
Thank you.
I second that.
Love it.
I'm done.
Okay, now I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second. Okay.
Third.
We need a first. Oh, oh, Mrs. Berger, Mr. Burns, Mr. Hood.
Yes.
Mrs. Slate? Mrs. Wood? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
All right.